At this time, I call the May meeting of the County Commission to order. We have Mr. Freddie Edmonds from Martin's Crossroads C.H. Church with us. He'll be giving our invocation. Mr. Edmonds, if you will, come to the podium. Commissioner Tankersley will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand.
Oh gracious heavens, Father, we just ask you to bless us tonight that you be with us, that you be with these councilmen in every decision that they make today, Father. For it will not only affect them, but also others also that are in the county. But we know that you are with us and you will help us tonight, Father. Because it says in your word, you are sitting closer than a brother to us. And it says also, that you are always there, even to the end. Help us, Father, and we will give you glory, honor forever, Father. So it's in your wonderful name we pray. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freddie, what's your time now? I have an addition that I need to make to the agenda. The additional will be to discuss the CD renewal with Raymond James, Finance Director Dawson's. It's our motion that we approve the agenda as printed with this addition.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And the motion is carried. It's our motion that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I was second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the approval? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Departmental reports. Agenda item 6A, Officer Emergency Service Director Casey Broom.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioner. Always a pleasure to be here. You have my submitted reports. I have no additions unless they're required.
Any questions to Director Broom on the report as presented? Just for everybody to know, we had 109 ambulance calls last month. That's about normal for what we do while we own this. I will make mention that on Highway 220 West, most of you, I'm sure, have seen a new building going up Lincoln County Officer Emergency Service. That will be a full-time staffed ambulance service. It will cover the south, southbound, the end of the county. Basically, everything from Thompson Highway back over Ferguson Justice Road, Greenwood Church Road, back down toward Raisel and everything, across White Rock Road from Carvin-Kennedy Partridge Town Road, Double Branches Road, Maxim, and the rest of the end of the county. That will be where that station will be worked out of, and we hope to be in there by this time next month. This is what our plans are, to cut down on the response time. I know that Dr. Edmonds, if he needs it, we want to have it down a little closer, too. Any questions to him is not. Okay, thank you. 6B is the Recreation Department. Of course, Director Glaze is not here. He's usually not here at this time of the year because he's at the Recreation Complex. You have your report from him in your book. I did tell you that we got Little League will end on May the 24th. Next year, we will not have Little League. We're going back to Georgia Parks and Recreation. We will have the same thing, it just won't be under the Little League. It'll come under County Recreation Department. Basically, we can't even play in playoffs with Little League. If we go back to Georgia Parks and Recreation, we'll be able to have, play up, be able to play with Washington and I'm fine. All Dr. Light, y'all, we go all the way up to Iowa City somewhere now, but we just can't compete with him to Little League field. So we want to be able to expand that program and be able to do more with it, and they've recommended from the Recreation Board, Little League Board, and Director Glaze that we do this. That looks like it. Soccer registration starts July the, uh, May the 31st or July the 12th. So and family connection starts. So some things going on out at the Recreation Complex. Two building programs out there. All right, 6C is the Finance Department Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have my printed report, and I also would like to give this verbal report on our cash balances. Our cash balances as of the end of April for all accounts is $9,191,030. In our major accounts, we have $4,6,562 in the general funds. We have $1,340,496 in the American Rescue Fund, $1,100,513 in the SPOSS VII Fund, $511,995 in the water fund, and that includes the water fund as well as the water reserve, $925,263 in the solid waste fund. We also have $2,153,426 in our Raymond James account. Chairman, that's my report.
Any questions, Director Dawson? That being done, you have all that information. I'm sure you read it. Item 6D is the Public Works Department Director Robbie Seymour.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add unless you have questions, and I'll be more than happy to answer those.
And I hate to report on the notice, but we're running a good bit behind on new residential building permits. This time last year, we probably had nine. This month, we had six, I mean, three. So we've had a total of 18 for the year. If this trend happens the rest of the year, we'll have about 35 building permits less than what we did last year. I don't know if the economy's causing that or what's happening, but every road you go on now, you go, oh, see a new house being built. And I sure don't want to slow down, do we, Dr. Light? But anyway, it is what it is.
Yes, I took it out of my book.
Anything else? Any questions? Nobody has a question? Okay. Well, we are excited tonight to fulfill the request of Commissioner H. Cooper Clyde as to recognize a young lady in our school system who's made some high achievements. We have with us, though, tonight, and I want to say this because I know who's in the room, but we have a lot that watch this thing on YouTube TV. So we have with us tonight, long time, public servant Lincoln County, Dr. Randall Edmonds with us. We're glad to have you, Doc. Good to see you. Your wife, Ms. Prudish, longtime educator, taught school over there about 69 years, I think. And of course, their son, Rex, and the father of the young lady that Commissioner Clyde's going to be talking about. And of course, we have Dr. Light. Dr. Light is our current school superintendent. He's here to participate with some others from the school. So at this time, Commissioner Clyde, it's your show.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Recently, as we had one of our work sessions, Commissioner Collins brought up the idea of us starting to recognize outstanding youth that we had in our community, our county, and talked about ways to do it. We'd like to see them more involved, learn a little bit more about government, and just show how proud we are of them. And so for my selection, I selected Emily Mae Edmonds, and thanks to Ms. Carrie Ball and her help in listening to achievements of this young lady and some of the things she has done at such a young age, and we are pretty proud of you, Emily Mae. And it's like your family's pretty proud of y'all, so I would say. I'd ask our superintendent of schools, Dr. Light, if he would, to come to the podium and present Emily Mae's accomplishments and all to our board.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, it's an honor to honor any of our children, but this one's really special. And she has the lineage, as you announced, that is here to support her. She comes from exceptional family background, and she has definitely earned the honor. And we need to continue to honor our children because they are our future, and someday they'll be sitting in these seats trying to guide the county. And thankfully, we have gone to honor them. To be invited to the Lincoln County High School Senior Beta Club is an outstanding accomplishment for our students. Emily Edmonds is one of those students. The four pillars of the National Beta Club include achievement, character, leadership, and service. Students must have and maintain a cumulative average of 90, earning the required service credits, and demonstrate the model leadership and moral character in order to be asked to join. Emily Mae Edmonds is a 12th grade student at Lincoln County. She is the current president of the LCHS Senior Beta Club. During her high school years in senior beta, she has also served as a service coordinator in 10th grade and as a vice president in 11th grade. In all three years of being in the club, Emily organized and participated in many service opportunities such as road cleanups, Secret Santa efforts, card-making ministries for the elderly, school beautification, tutoring, and helping out in any other events around town such as art festivals and pageants. To add, this year, she also completed over 60 hours of medical volunteering at different medical facilities in our areas such as the local emergency room, eye doctor, dentist, and urgent care. Emily Edmonds is also awarded a $1,000 scholarship from National Beta Club. But listen to these numbers. She's one of 257 students that were chosen out of 3,100 applicants. That's high achievement. In addition to her accomplishments as a senior beta club, Emily has also been very active in both school and community theater programs, which is why she's dressed as she is, because she's leaving in just a few minutes to go participate tonight's opening night. She is also an active member of the First Assembly of God, where she sings in the choir, volunteers in the nursery. She also participates in a style of theater at church, which is wonderful. The national, I'm sorry, I lost my place. There we go. Emily has been awarded the Georgia Certificate of Merit, the National Rural Small Town Scholarship Award, and highest average in 11th grade, and star student for this year at LCHS. Emily has gained acceptance into the Professional Scholars Accelerated BS/MD Program at the Medical College of Georgia, at Augusta University, where she will further pursue her goal to become a pediatric physician. Congratulations, Ms. Emily. You've earned it, but you are an awesome student, and we are very, very happy to be honoring you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Light. Emily Mae, would you come up to the podium for me and receive the certificate of recognition for a young, high achiever from the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County?
Well, we've, you know, I've been around here a long time myself and off and on, but I don't know of anything any better than we do to recognize somebody like Emily and what she does. Ms. Ball? Y'all have, uh...
I think they probably want to go. They got to go to their place.
Y'all going to a place. We thank y'all very, very much for being here with us. Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Just give it to her, Sherry, if you don't mind. Oh, thank you so much. All right. That's our trash pick of a lovely real brother. Thank you, Ms. Ball. We appreciate it.
Anyway, let's move on.
Relate. That's right. Relate.
That's it. I couldn't think of anything else. Item number eight. We going into a public hearing, I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. We go into our public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. On May the 8th, the Planning Commission heard the following request. The applicant is Kellyanne Fletcher, map 54, parcel 012, better known as 3078 Augusta Highway, consisting of 5.68 acres, currently zoned A2. The request was to rezone for special use so that Ms. Fletcher could operate a catering business out of that facility. My planning commission heard the request and recommends approval unanimously, Chairman.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from Director Seymour and the Planning and zoning Commission that we, they recommended the approval of special use. Well, we all like to eat. And I think most of us can testify to the good job you do with, when you do your catering. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation, planning commission, and approve the special use for Ms. Fletcher?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is made by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Yes, ma'am.
Are you supposed to come out of public hearing before you vote?
Yes, we are. Always good to have somebody to tell you what to do. Usually, it's a lady.
Well, you do right, too. That's right.
Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of planning commission?
So moved.
Is that second?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Congratulations, you've got what you wanted, and we'll look forward to getting around some table when you cater. Normally, I ask if there's anybody here for or against. I didn't see anybody here that was for it. I could look at Stephen Dawkins and tell he was in favor of it, so I didn't see any reason to do that and get anything crossed up. Thank you. You're welcome to leave if you want to. All right, item number nine is a grant for the Recreation Complex. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We are looking at applying for a grant at the Recreation Department to upgrade some of the facilities that are out there that need it desperately. The grant is a 50-50 match, but in order for us to apply for the grant, we have to have an engineering cost estimate of the work that we want to do. And what we're talking about is lights on the fields, updating those to LEDs, fencing around the ball fields needs to be redone, bathroom facilities need to be added, and some of those things. So what I brought to you tonight is a fee agreement with Johnson Lasho, which is an engineering firm out of Augusta, that we've met with to give us those cost estimates that we would need to apply for the grant. Also would give us a master plan that would give us an added tool that we could use down the road as we proceed down the road. It may be that we have to apply for grants once in multiple years and not just in one. So I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to approve a fee agreement with Johnson Lasho over at the cost of $9,900 for the master plan and the engineering cost estimate for that grant, and this would be paid out of SPOSS VII funds, Mr. Chairman.
Director Dawson, we have to do this with some company before we could even apply for the grant.
That is correct. We have to have an engineering cost estimate to apply for the grant. Yes, sir.
So we can't apply for 50-50 grant if we don't get it?
That is correct, yes.
Probably looking at somewhere around $200,000 to a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar grant if we do that. I think we all know what we doing. You've heard the recommendation that we take $9,900 to pay the engineering firm, pay for SPOSS VII. It's our motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Discussion. That being done, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Proceed with that. All right, now, that's just one more thing on your plate.
Yes, sir.
Glad you got a big plate. Okay, item 10 is catastrophic inmate medical coverage. Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, I bring forth to you, as both a request from the, as a request from the sheriff and the jail, that we'd like to purchase catastrophic inmate health coverage with an effective date of July 1 at an annual premium of $4,767.84. So it would have a $10,000 deductible. We are self-insured for our inmate medical coverage, and so this would cover, provide us coverage for everything over $10,000.
Okay, you've heard the request of the, what did you say, we come out of the general?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I failed to say. This would be a general fund budgeted item that you approved it.
Okay, you heard the request. I think we've discussed this at the work session. Is there a motion that we pay 47? Did you make an even number? $4,767.84.
Yes, sir, Chairman. That's the premium quote.
All right, on the catastrophic inmate medical coverage, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley.
Is this a year-to-year contract?
No, sir, this would be just for one year, and we would determine whether or not we wanted to renew it next budget cycle. So I guess that I answer your...
It is year-to-year then.
It is year-to-year, yes, sir, I'm sorry. But we would have to renew it.
Commissioner Clyde.
Yes, sir, Director Dawson, do you recommend this?
Yes, sir, I had also failed to mention that we got this quote through the Association of County Commissioners, so they are a part of our self-insured group. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And you did work with Captain Taylor when he was over at the jail down there a few weeks ago. Any other questions? There is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. The final budget adjustment, Director Dawson.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask this item be moved to next month's meeting. I am not prepared tonight.
Ask clerk to place it on next month's agenda and work session. Moving right along, Ben. Library board appointments. I have an opening for a countywide spot on that. We have asked to talk to Ms. Crystal Beard, who is an elementary third-grade school teacher at Lincoln County High School, lives at 2323 Washington Highway, to serve on the library board. That's my recommendation. Looking for another motion.
I make motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Clyde, that's second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Item 13 is the Region 6 EMS Council. Director Casey Broom has served on that for some two decades, I understand, 20-some-odd years. It's a three-year term, but he continues to represent Lincoln County on the Region 6 EMS Council. Is there a motion that we reappoint Director Broom?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Item 14 is the addition of a CD renewal from Raymond James. Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, as you remember, last year, you had authorized the chairman and I to move some of our fund balance into the Raymond James account. And we did two six-month, four 12-month, and two 18-month CDs. The two six-month CDs have matured, and what I'm asking the board to do is to renew one of those CDs for 12 months at $250,000. The interest rate on that CD would be just below 5%. I don't have an exact number tonight, but we would not let it go anything below the maximum we have now, which is 4.7, so it would be somewhere between 4.7 and 5%. And then $250,000 move into their money market account at an interest rate of 5% on those two. So Chairman, that would be $250,000 to renew the CD for 12 months, and $250,000 in their money market account at 5%.
Okay, so the motion will be that we take 250 of the $500,000 that's in Raymond James now, put it in a, what do we call it? A little check-in, money market account.
Yes, sir.
That we take 250 of that, and we reinvest the other 250 back with Raymond James. Is that correct? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And the motion is carried, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried, we adjourn.